Good evening. Today is Thursday, September 12th at 6:30 PM. This is the Olentangy Local Schools Board of Education. This is a regular meeting. I'll call the meeting to order. Ms. Hatfield, Ms. Calvo.
Mr. Barnes?
Here.
Mrs. Feesel?
Here.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mrs. Patrick?
Here.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Here. Please stand and join in the closing.
...introduce to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to have a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Some of...
Second, please.
Second.
Any discussions on the agenda? I think seeing none, Ms. Calvo.
Mrs. Feesel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we've got three presentations tonight. The first is the new DACC facility, which we just toured over in Utah. We believe Allison Mowry, Tocad Price, and Trey Cummings can speak to us.
Good evening. I'm Alyssa Mowry. I'm the Public Information Officer with the Delaware Area Career Center, and I appreciate the Olentangy Board of Education coming out a little early and giving or having a tour of our facilities and see behind the scenes what it is our students do. We're very fortunate to be in this new facility. It's our first year having all of our programs under one roof, and I want you to hear from our students what they think about it and how their experiences are. But I think you'll see a couple of themes among the programs that our students are able to collaborate now, that they're close to each other. There's programs that work across town from each other. We toured with the board our early childhood education program, where there's small preschool students that learn from our high school students. They can wander down to the fire lab and learn about fire safety from the fire program. They can go over to the health technology program and learn what it's like to go to the doctor and have some of those things available to them that they didn't have before. Trey is in our engineering program, and he is able to collaborate the welding program because that's something that they both learned. And Trey has a unique perspective. He is the last class or part of the last class that started out in our old South Campus facility. So there will be no more students after him who know what it's like to be in a smaller building with the low ceilings and not very many windows and being separated from half of his student body. The other thing that I think you'll see in common between our programs is that our students generally come to us with an idea in mind of what they want to do with their lives. Teenagers today, they want to have a passion for what they do when they graduate and they grow up and they get a job. They know, they have an awareness, they're going to be doing this for the rest of their lives, and they want to really enjoy it. So when they come here, they're really exploring, getting a deep dive into the career field they're interested in. So with Trey, there is a whole host of engineering careers out there. And instead of just knowing he wants to be an engineer and going off to college and exploring that there, he's doing that with us, where he's not paying for college tuition and doing that with the supervision of our high school teachers. And the same thing with McKenna. She's interested in the health field, and she's exploring all of the options that are available to her in the health field and doing that with the guidance of our instructors. So the goal is for our students to graduate with confidence and clarity, knowing that if they're going into the workforce, they're doing it into the right workforce. If they're going into college, they're paying college tuition for the right amount of money. So we're excited to be here. I think you'll see that there's a lot of pride that goes into having our new building. The facility reflects now what our students have always been capable of, what they've always been doing. But now the facility looks like that people are taking it more seriously, and they're taking their students more seriously, and they're enjoying this pride they now have in their school. So I want to hand it over to Trey and McKenna. So Trey, do you want to go first?
So as you heard before, I was here when the last school was here, and it's just over there. And I moved to the bottom corner down there. It's awesome. It's a really fun life. So our lab originally, when I first got there and on the first night I came here to just even see what the program was going to be, I walked in and I thought it was kind of dingy. It was old and it looked like an office. It had cubicles pretty much. It just separated all of these spaces. And then I walked in and I saw there were two robots. There were rows of computers that we would use to design whatever we wanted. And there were just tables where you could make electronic circuit boards. It was awesome. And it's just, we could, when our teacher was lecturing us in the older lab, it was a little harder to pay attention because we could hear three other different labs talking or lecturing or some of them are on their break, they're playing games. So you can hear them yelling "Bottles of Dragons." So it was, it was interesting. And we loved the program, but the space was a little bit cramped and it wasn't as professional as it could have been. And if you saw our lab down there, it is spread out. It's nice, and we have dedicated spaces for everything. For our sophomores, we have the dedicated design pretty much, where you have about, I think, 25 computers that are just all lined up in rows, where you can create whatever you want in SolidWorks, which is what I also learned at CAD my freshman year at the room. And that did help me when I came here because then I also had a head start of some of my other classes because I took CAD there, which was kind of nice because then it made it a little bit easier to get certification. And just, we, it is obviously, we take a little bit more pride for this stuff we have now. Because the older space, it, it wasn't office pretty much. And this one, it looks professional. And when you have people come in and look at it, they just kind of say, wow, instead of the original, oh, this is neat. And it's just a career center. But this, it actually looks like we are doing product, we are, we were already doing productive things, but now it looks like we are professionals and we are making progress, and we're going to be a future of engineering. It's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
McKenna, do you want to tell us why you chose Olentangy Career Center? Of course, please.
Yeah, so I originally wanted to come to the Career Center because I knew I had a passion for both health and science, and I really wanted to be able to help people with whatever I did. That was kind of always my end goal. And I kind of came here and I saw that there were lots of kids coming with a lot of similar interests that I had, and they all did want to do something in the science and medical field. And so it was kind of like a good environment to bounce off of each other. And I was able to kind of really see myself here. And I was uncertain about what exactly I wanted to do in those fields. And so I really came here to find some clarity on where I was going to go after high school because I knew I was like, I want to go to college. I want to get into my career. I want to waste time. I just want to be able to start helping people. And so I found the Bioscience Lab, and it was just amazing because you walk in and it's a professional lab. Like you have professional equipment. You're working in a professional environment. You have lab coats. You're wearing protective gear. It's really, it gives you an idea of what working in a professional lab is going to be like. And you can't find that in a regular high school science classroom. Like you can't wear a lab coat or do any of that. And it's, it's a really unique experience because you get to see like all the different things that the actual scientists would be doing. And so it was really eye-opening to me. And I know my instructor, Gina Lance, she's amazing at connecting and networking and finding people who will let us job shadow an intern. And I know I've had lots of opportunities to go out into the workforce and shadow different people in their careers. And the DACC gives us shadowing days where we have the opportunity to go and see the different careers to help us find our best fit. And I think that's super important because that was the whole reason I came here in the first place, because I was really trying to find my best fit. And so, and that's really was my...
Can I ask Trey a question?
Yes.
Do you know what type of engineering you want to go into now?
So I came, I actually came in as where I think I was going to be an electrical engineer. And last year, we learned a lot about EC and DC circuits. And I figured now I do not want to be an electrical engineer. I'm thinking more about either chemical or engineering.
And McKenna, do you know which area do you want to go into?
Originally, I was really thinking I was going to be on the medical track where I wanted to be a pediatrician. I love working with kids. I'm from a big family. It was just kind of like always in me to want to work in that field. And then I realized that I was going to be paying myself a cost because I have so many siblings. And I realized that school is not funny. So I was trying to really explore my options. And that's where my instructor came in, and she was like, look, you have all these other options. Like the field is so broad. You have so many opportunities. Like just start looking at all kinds of things. And then that was when we took a field trip to Marion Tech, and we were kind of looking at the different career fields in the health field. And those careers are, they're much less, they're much more cost-effective, but they're also in very high demand, and they're also making a lot of a difference. And so I kind of fell in love with older science technicians because they really get to work with like expecting mothers and things like that. And they really get to show their like bedside manner and kind of be there for them. And that was really appealing to me. So that's what I'm going to do after college.
Trey shared with me the other day that one of the biggest things he's learning is his likes and dislikes within the engineering program. And that's, that's a big thing. You don't want to learn your dislikes when you're in college or when you're in a superior field. So they're both figuring that out now and graduating with that confidence and clarity that we love seeing them.
And how's the transition from the Career Center to back to your home school? Do you still feel connected to Orange and Liberty?
Yeah. It's, I mean, you're still there for half the day, and then you come here. It's just two different cultures, so then you're a part of the school.
So do you, do you both do your lab in, lab year academics at your home school?
Yep.
How many students do both lab in academics?
It's about 50/50. And McKenna goes back, and she's in the marching band, so she has time to get back and still participates math. In fact, she was screwing around today to still do marching band today and get back here tonight. So we appreciate her for that. But about 50% of the students will take the academics that are here. And it's, going back is a good way to stay in touch with your friends and then still make new friends here. So the friends they make here are just instant friends who they already have something in common with. So McKenna is surrounded by people who love science, and I don't get any other jokes because I'm not a science person. And Trey is surrounded by people who love engineering. They love processes, and they love things to be, you know, in a certain order. So these are friends that they're going to have for the rest of their lives.
Just a quick comment. I really liked your phrase, confidence and clarity. Does that appear a lot in your literature?
I say it a lot because it's really, I mean, of anything else, we want our students to be happy. We want them to be passionate about what they do. But all of that comes with having that confidence and clarity when they graduate because you can feel really lost. There's a lot of students graduate from high school, and they, they check all the boxes, and they, they did really great things, but they don't know what to do with it after that. But they have their instructors right by their side who are guiding them through. They tried on a lot of hats. They figured out what, what they like and what they don't like. And that gives them that, that confidence and clarity. So yeah, we, we really push that. That's, for us, that's essential.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just a little bit more information about the Career Center. You know, not only are there Olentangy students here, but also multi-validable, like Delaware City, Westerville, and Worthington also begin here. And then if there's openings, we're an open enrollment school. So students from like Marion could open enroll if their Career Center doesn't have a program that we have, like the Zoo School would be able to run classes in school here. So, and then we do have programs that adults can participate in, like our welding program, our EMT, our police. You can participate in. We even have Excel classes in the evenings. And then some of our programs are open for the public to use. Like next door is our restaurant. It's going to be open to the public to use. And I'll let everybody know when they're serving lunch. Our cosmetology program, we're looking at the services that they provide. Everything like a salon provides. You can even get your car worked on in the auto tech program. So those programs, the students are working, and they're learning at the same time. So just spread the word.
Also, from a government's perspective, you to the county schools has a seat on the DACC board. Julie's president of the DACC board to represent Olentangy well of the year and a strong advocate for the DACC.
Yeah.
Thank you. Next presentation is the assessment schedule. Can you?
Good evening. Thanks for having us today. And we have kind of three goals for our presentation today. One is to share about our state assessments and our testing schedule for the year. And Tim Beer, our supervisor, updated assessments and will do that for us. Second, we're going to look at, because the state tests are very closely tied to graduation, we're going to do some review of the new graduation requirements that are coming for our students. And then finally, we know the state report cards released today, so we'll do kind of a review of results from the state report card as well. So I'm going to turn it over to Tim and talk about our assessment schedule.
Evening, everyone. So we just wanted to kind of give you an update because we did a little review of our assessment schedule to make sure that we're being efficient and maximizing the assessments that we are required to give and that we require the district to make sure that they serve multiple purposes. So kind of an overview of what we're doing in terms of assessments this year. First of all, last year, we did assess almost 14,000 students, which makes sense as our normal goes up. We're going to assess more students. So almost 14,000 students were given an OST or Ohio State test. Roughly 33, 32,500 total tests were administered. All of the results were mailed out beginning of August, a little earlier than usual, which that's kind of my team. So we're pretty proud to get all of those stuffed and on their way because it's a process that's done by hand. It takes a while. Otherwise, all of our testing data from last year, including our last data point we're waiting for, which was the summer, high school OSTs, those results came back last week. So all assessment data from last year is out at this time. So OST update for this year. Everything is the same. The, the big change you'll notice is the third bullet point. So we have, still have ELA grades three and eight and then grade five science. But the big change, like I was saying, is that high school, for our freshman class, we now have six required state assessments. And Jeanette will talk a little bit more about that when she talks about the new grad updates. The test times vary from two and a half hours for your third grade math towards, to four hours for your high school English language art. So the test times are the same as last year. And the last point, we, we still continue to really try to limit disruptive educational time for state assessments. So for example, the high schools say in the spring, they only have four quote-unquote testing days. So we really do try to make that, again, efficient and as least disruptive as possible to the normal school day. So district assessment updates. The, the big change this year for us is we now have AngWeb Plus K-8 and also in the high school in our algebra classes. AngWeb Plus is a universal screener. It's used to identify adverse students. It's also a progress monitoring tool. We're active given three different windows. We're currently in our fall window. And again, the big change is K-5 is now, we used to do AngWeb 1, which is more of a paper-based format, to now all K-5, including middle school, high school, are doing AngWeb Plus. The nice thing is with AngWeb Plus, it also kind of doubles it as our reading diagnostic with a degree guarantee. So in the past, we used AngWeb 1.0, and again, you transition to, to AngWeb Plus. And the big change with Plus is it not only is a general outcome assessment, but it also is a standards-based measure. So it's a little bit more robust data for the students and staff. Similar slide for last year as far as our other district assessments. Terranova, NBU continues to be given for gifted purposes in grades two, three, and six. Terranova also does serve as our alternative for the, for grade reading guarantee for our grade three students. PSAT, which will be given here October 16th, we're going to continue to give that to juniors at no cost and to sophomores who wish to sign up for the seventh and cover. Otherwise, ACT, we continue to give that, state funded ACT. That's February 26th this year. This will be our second year of giving it online. We had good results where we saw all of our, all of our buildings saw a slight increase from last year, from the previous year to last year from papers to online. So we were encouraged by that, and we're going to continue that process of getting ACT online. And that's my brief.
More slides.
I have a question.
Yeah.
You said that the AngWeb 1 was a paper assessment. Is the Plus electronic?
So, that's a good question. So for grades two to eight, it's an online assessment primarily. For K-1, it's similar process in that students have a paper code in front of them. The difference is the teacher is grading it right on their computer. So it used to be kind of like a data entry like after the fact or staff. So so far, they love that. It's kind of all done in one sitting. So, and so for the older ones, it's not online.
Other questions? Renovation info.
All right, so we know that graduation requirements have changed. So we're going to kind of briefly go through of our students from high school, what their graduation requirements are. And spend a little time talking about what is the new for the class of 2020 or beyond. So our current seniors for class of 2020, they are still kind of, they've got the most options right now. The first three bullet points are the graduation pathways, which we've had for the past couple of years. Earning 18 points on the state tests, earning an industry credential, more readiness, or earning a remediation free score in the ACT or SAT. So if students meet one of those three pathways and earn their required credits, they're able to graduate. The additional options that the class of 2020 has is that they have some temporary options. The class of 2018 and 2019 also had some additional options that if they didn't meet one of those first three bullets, there were some additional things that they could do. Those have been modified slightly, but those are still available for our class of 2020. And then the final option is that our current senior class could also graduate based on the, the new requirements that are just coming out. For our class of 2021 and 2022, so our current sophomores and juniors, in addition to earning their 22 required credits, they could meet one of those three graduation pathways that we've had for the past few years, or they could meet the new graduation requirements. So the difference between the class of 2020, our current seniors, and our sophomores and juniors is that our sophomores and juniors don't have those additional options that our class of 2020 has. And then our class of 2023 and beyond, so our current freshmen, and maybe grade lower than that for right now, they are the first class that required to meet the new graduation requirements that are coming from House 166. And those are basically broken down into three components. One, students have to satisfy the course requirements and earn their required credits. They have to demonstrate competency, and they have to demonstrate readiness. So for course requirements, this is the Olentangy course required credits. Obviously, they're very similar to what the state requirements are, but we have a few additional requirements for our students. So our students must earn 22 credits for English, for math, for science, and social studies, half-credit physical education and health, one fine arts, and then six additional left credits from course that they're choosing. So that's been step one for this.
And the state only requires 20 credits? Or require 22?
One of our additional is we require some state economics as well, half-credit economics that's not required by state. So step two, this is one of the new pieces, is they have to demonstrate competency. The state is still kind of coming up with what that definition is, but they're going to have to demonstrate competency or get a competency score on the ALG1 test and the ELA 2. So that's that, their 10th grade English scores. Again, that competency score hasn't yet been released, but it will have to be developed by March 1st of 2020. So we're still waiting on kind of that additional information as far as what competency that is. If students are unable to demonstrate competency on ALG1 and ELA 2, they do have three additional alternative ways that they could demonstrate competency. One is through earning credits through college credit plus. They could fulfill requirements of a career experience in technical skills, which there are some different criteria there for them, or demonstrate military readiness. So essentially, enlisting in the military. And that could be additional ways that they can demonstrate competency. And then the third piece is demonstrating readiness. And so if students must earn at least two diploma seals, one of which has to be a state-defined seal. So you can see in the left-hand column of that table are all the variety of different state-defined seals that students could earn, ranging from Ohio State's readiness job seal, state sealed by literacy. Then there's anything for citizenship and science, which are going to bring in some of the state testing information. And several of these still were waiting on additional kind of guidelines from the state. So we know what they are. We don't necessarily know how our students can earn them yet. And then the state is also requiring a locally-defined seal. So we have three options. Districts are required to develop guidelines for at least one of them. Our plan currently is to develop guidelines for all three just to make sure that we have as many options for our students as possible. So we'll be working on that in the curriculum department throughout this next year, and those guidelines have to be more adopted. So you have to care a lot more about those locally-defined seals coming up very soon.
Well, they've literally indicated on their diploma, their seal or just their transfer.
So that hasn't been, that's not our question. We kind of asked that same thing. My, my guess is no, but the state hasn't given any guidelines with that. So the Ohio State's jobs, meaning Ohio State means jobs readiness seal is an actual seal on their diploma, and that's in law. So that's kind of already been established for a while. The seal by literacy has also been established for a while. That's on their transfer, but not on their diploma. But the state hasn't anything about acting.
So there's no consistency under seal.
Yeah.
I'm sure, I'm sure somebody will want to stand in the undercourt for that.
Right. Yeah, so yes, the two seals we know that will be on their diploma is Ohio State's jobs readiness and then honors diplomas they have. They're not on their diplomas. Any other questions about graduation requirements?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so for the class of 2023, they don't have to have a minimal amount on their state exam device test in one?
So the demonstrating competency is there, whatever they define that competency score needs to be on ALG1 and ELA 2. That's kind of what all students will have to have.
But of the, of just the seven states. They don't need to have whatever they...
18 points. 18 points, correct.
Right now, they have to have 18 points.
And 16 points.
Right. And then it's going down to two.
Yeah, but they don't know what the score is. Right. And two, that PACT count. For example, the citizenship and science seal, the ways that students earn those is by earning a certain score on the state test. So the science seal, students can earn that by earning a sufficient on biology test. So those other tests still could come into play, but that can vary by student. They don't, they won't come into play.
What was the citizenship seal in the state test?
So right now, it's proficient on both US history and US timeline. Or earning a certain score on an AP test or college credit plus. So then the much anticipated state report card. So of course, we've been looking at a lot of this today. Obviously, very excited to see the data that is displayed here. It is the first year that we are as an overall grade, grade as an A district.[1628.08] Um, then you can see the different component grades there as well. Um, in the achievement category, we are in a B. Progress, which has been much talked about in the past few years, um, we are now an A. Across the board in all of the different, um, measures within there, and then overall as a component, um, we've got an A for gap closing, an A for our graduation rate, a C for improving at-risk eighth degreeers, and then a B and a prepared for success. So, and all of the calculation behind the scenes as far as how those are weighted did come out, um, as an A overall. We also looked at how we compare to like districts, um, as far as our performance index, because that did increase by point three from last year to this year. Um, so we are ranked twenty-second in the state. Uh, we were ranked twenty-fifth last year, so that's an increase that we are excited to see. Um, we're also ranked second in Central Ohio and second among our similar districts in our performance index, just behind the all.
When you count Central Ohio, are you counting Grandville?
So Grandville's not in it, Grandville did score higher than us, so if you count Grandville.
No, I just wanted, when I was speaking, I just wanted to speak the same language that you're speaking.
So our Central Ohio is right in that one.
Okay, that's not a great one, I ruined that.
So yeah. They even scored higher, you could take a look at that.
Some media outlets say include Grandville.
Yeah.
I don't, but they do.
I think they're picking up the region.
Yeah.
So if you look at it, they're all able to live in the same region, and that's why they use, they include it in there. Because we don't have to go back today as well.
Yeah, right, we'd see, you can look at it. Um, we are one thirty-one districts in the state to earn an A overall. Um, so actually, this is kind of a brief overview. The plan then is that the next board meeting, we'll dig into those specific methods a little bit more. Obviously, there's a lot to celebrate, we'll continue to look at those areas where we can continue to improve as well. Any questions right now about the state of the country? Congratulations.
Thank you. All right, our next presentation, then, is the food service and wellness. One of our favorite dishes.
Yes, we like, we're gonna do. Favorite.
What was your reaction to that, to it's the vegan catered time?
It's the full offal time. Okay. So thanks for being there on your favorite, well, your favorite presentation, that makes me all happy. Um, so thanks for allowing Alissa and I to be here, um, this evening. So we're gonna kind of tag team this presentation, and maybe do a brief overview of what's been happening in the food service department, and then Alissa will talk about our district wellness committee, what she has going on in her department. Um, so in the food service department, um, we've been pretty busy, as you would expect, um, feeding the kids of Olentangie. Um, last school year, we spent a lot of time, um, preparing and having our every-three-year administrative review, which is when the higher department education, the Office of, which is changing. Office of Integrated Student Support comes onsite, um, and they review our program. It happens every three years. Um, what happens with this review, they basically come onsite, they review a lot of our documentation, including grain-reduced meal applications, um, making sure that we're approving those correctly and accurately. Um, they look at our C N sixes and our C N sevens, which is the documentation we use to input, um, into our grain system, um, and how we get reimbursement back from U S D A for serving reversible meals. They look at our menus, they look at our production records, um, verification, which is a mandatory process that we need to do every October and November, and which we have to verify thirty percent of the grain or used meal applications we receive. Um, we have to ask, um, those who filled it out for documentation to support what is on the application. Um, so we give thirty percent of those. They look at our onsite accountability audits, our food safety inspections, our hazard plan, um, and just mounds and mounds of paperwork that they go through. Um, so they look at that, and then they also select, because of our district, four sites um, for them to go onsite and to observe lunch and or breakfast service. Um, for last year, they picked to go to Glen Oak Elementary, Olentangie, Meadows Elementary, Orange Middle School, and Orange High School. Uh, they visit each school, and they basically watch lunch and or breakfast, making sure that when the cashier is selecting, um, reversible breakfast or reversible lunch, that it is indeed a reversible meal named by U S D A. Um, they also make sure that we are serving with some menus, and that the menu complies with the U S D A national school, or school breakfast program. Um, so they were here for about a week. Um, after that time, we were found in compliance with the three, um, areas that they review. So the first, um, standard is Performance Standard One, which is our certification and benefit issuance process. So approving of the grain-reduced meals, um, we didn't find, um, any error on those. Then Performance Standard Two, which is our meal pattern and our dietary specification, um, compliance. Um, and then the third area we were in compliance with was the general areas that they deem to be hall. Um, expectations, civil rights, our wellness policy, professional standards, smart snacks, um, availability for the water, food safety, record eating. So we were very happy, obviously, it is a big undertaking, um, as a department, to have the state come in and audit, um, your program. Um, I was very happy with the school that they selected, they did an awesome job representing our district. Um, so we're glad that, we're glad that review's done. Um, unfortunately, we now have two more additional audits that are waiting to hear from the state that we need to do. We have a recurrent review, that is new, we've never done, and then a comprehensive resource management review that we've also never done too. Um, so we're waiting to feel early when we'll have to, um, partake in those. Um, so on top of having our administrative review, I'll give you some of our numbers from last year. So we served one hundred and sixty-nine days last year. Um, over those one hundred and sixty-nine days, we served over one point five million lunches, um, over two thousand breakfasts, and over one million a la carte equivalents. So we were just under three million meals, um, for the whole school year. Um, that's about almost seventeen thousand meals per day. Um, it's a lot of meals. Um, we unfortunately have seen some declines in participation at the middle school level and high school level. Elementary, um, for the most part, stays the same, which we were excited about. Um, we had in the past seen some decreases at elementary, I think it's because of our full offal time. But I think, um, so we're trying to gauge how we can get more of the middle schools back, middle lunch line, and they get all those back to, they don't have more to buy, they don't have enough time to spend with their friends. Um, but we're gonna keep, um, at elementary level, we're gonna keep with our two hot entrees that started last year. One being a vegetarian friendly option for our students. And then at middle school and high school level, we're gonna continue to extend the customizable entrees that they get to do. So we've had the deli for a long time, kids enjoy it because they get to say what they want. So we're doing a lot more of those, who do come to the entrees. Maggie Cheese Bar, um, Broth and Noodle Bar, Salad Bars, Mexican Fiesta, whatever you like. Um, also new for this year, um, we are, um, trying a new molded fire spray in the, um, school. So a lot of people do not, um, appreciate our use of styrofoam at times. Um, so we have been able to get, um, very effective pricing when it comes to this molded fire spray. It's a hundred percent recyclable, made from a hundred percent recyclable materials, and it's a hundred percent reusable too. Um, so we're excited about that. Um, last week for this school year, as of October first, all of our elementary schools will now be offering breakfast. So over the past two years, we've been slowly bringing on all the elementary schools, um, to offer breakfast. We will now be on our last one, be able to start October first. Um, and at that time, we'll have breakfast available at all of our grade levels, at all of the buildings. So we are excited about that. Um, it's a great option for our families, it's very top-effective and really waves to get our kids ready for the day. Um, before I turn over to Alissa, it's keeping my tradition, yes, I did bring some goodies for you guys. Um, so I brought some lemon bread that is new this year. It counts, um, as a breakfast, it's a children's breakfast item. It's lemon bread, and then I brought raspberry lemonade raisins, which sounds like a half-cup fruit. I brought a cocoa cherry bar, also comes in cocoa raisin bar. Um, smart snack approved, a lot of kids, um, enjoy it because it's kind of a nice little chocolate taste for them. But they need smart snacks, which are our federal all-of-part standards, covering, and you can then sell to students outside of the meal pattern. And then I brought falafel tops, which are new vegetarian options, um, that we have. Um, they're menu that elementary school, um, the menu is new this year, and there were also menu of vegetarian chicken nugget too, um, to try to appeal to more of our students. Um, it's made by Morning Star, so it's a very high-quality product, and, um, we got some good reception the first time around, so. Um, Alissa, we'll turn it over to you, Alissa, you got any questions for me?
I agree with your question, because it's been in the media.
Yeah.
What is our policy on students who have fallen behind on their lunch charge counts?
Okay, so, good question. So we do have an administrative guideline that addresses our meal charge policy. Um, in a nutshell, it's available for anyone to read. In a nutshell, at, um, elementary levels, they allow students to, um, go in the hole up to ten meals before they receive a call chain meal. At middle school, it's five meals, and at high school, it's three meals, if they're allowed that. And comparing to a lot of neighboring districts, we're pretty lenient, um, with our burn policy. Um, and we always make sure, we always send community homes to parents to alert them when they're either low, they start getting low alerts when they're under ten dollars, and then, um, they also get them on the negative too.
And what is the alternative lunch?
Uh, our new is a cheese sandwich, uh, fruit and a milk. So they will always be bad.
It really is the best thing of having your last child graduate. Stop giving little lunch balances.
Except when your husband works in the district.
Question, do parents have the option to set when their lunch alert balance with a low portion of it, it's like, could you be notified when it's at fifteen dollars instead of three dollars?
No, unfortunately, the way our system works, um, it comes from our point-of-sale system called, it's called Meals Plus. And we have to set it as a threshold, um, for the whole district. So I can't, and that, we get a lot of parents who say, my kid, we get two folds. Ten dollars is too high, and ten dollars is too low. Because some kids in high schools and middle schools could spend five, six dollars a day, whereas elementary, they send maybe two fifty a day.
Is it ten dollars, is that with the alert?
Yes, ten dollars. Well, it's nine dollars.
And then pricing, is like, would you use in the spring?
Yeah, we would, we'd have it in the spring. Um, we did not raise lunch prices this past year, um, in this school year. Um, it used to be where it was federally mandated that we had to increase our weighted lunch, uh, lunch prices. Um, for the past two years, they have now, um, U S D A has now said that if you have a positive balance in your lunch fund, your O O six account, in January, um, you do not, you are not required to raise your lunch prices. We've been in that saying that we have not been required to raise lunch prices. We will evaluate in the spring and then see what we have to do.
Anything else?
I have one last question. You indicated, um, a couple of years ago, when we had a large amount of, or a higher than normal amount of snow days, that usually the food service operates, you know, in black. But that year was, because we had missed so many days of school year revenue streams from town, what was it this last year?
It was down due to, we were in school, what is it, one hundred and sixty-nine days, we had five snow days. Uh, on an average snow day, we as a department lose, um, thirty thousand dollars. So we pay our employees, and we do not bring revenue in those days. And then we never, since we do not make up plenty of days of snow days, we don't return that revenue back.
She's the one, means one person.
The seniors love you.
I guess, I'm all for the safety of our children.
But eat.
I like that you can eat while I talk, because then you're a little distracted. So I like partnering with that. And in relation to the low lunch balance, or when kids go into the negative and things, um, I have been able to utilize our school social workers to reach out to families to find out are there any non-academic things going on with that. That is, um, providing them with a little bit of lunch balance, and you can help them get find out whether they reduce lunch. Um, if there's a, this place in situation that might be going on, things like that, we do make sure we utilize our social workers, um, you know, to be there for that as well. So a quick update on, um, the wellness committee, that Bethany and I are chair. We do have a new wellness policy that looks at our, um, nutrition programs and our physical activity as well. So we have, uh, continuing, obviously, our, uh, wellness committee, we have fifteen members. Has some rise of local and the staff, as well as some community partners through, um, local agencies such as the, our, um, general health. We quarterly to discuss policies, um, or discuss any new things that might be going on. A lot of big things happening right now are food allergies, and people bringing food into schools, such as elementary schools and things like that, and should we be looking at that? So we're gonna be, um, having a wellness survey go out to all of our staff. It's gonna measure, um, looking at who, what buildings bring food into the classrooms for birthday celebrations, for, um, many kind of cultural celebrations, what types of allergies they're looking at, how many food allergy phytofores do we have. Um, also looking at, do we use physical activity as reward, or are we taking away recess from kids as a consequence? Um, and then also looking at mental health and wellness, um, for social-emotional well-being as well, um, as our, our buildings have in place. So those are the topics that our wellness committee are addressing, we meet quarterly. Um, and then to update you on student well-being and what to do with that, um, obviously, lots of things are going on, but just a quick, I, when I started in sixteen, seventeen school year, we had four school social workers. And this coming school year, we will be up to nineteen mental health staff with Centero interns, social workers, and O S U clinicians. That does not include our school counselors or the psychologists, so that's just additional staffing specifically related to mental health. So I'm very excited in the thousands, thank you so much for being in support of that. It's greatly needed, and our students have certainly benefited from having those services in place. So I wanted to give you a quick update of, um, different programs and that we're putting in place at the different tier levels. You've heard me talk last year about the different tiers that we're doing, um, in relation to the R T I and T S S process. So for tier one, which is the school climate and universal health promotion, um, and mental health promotion, uh, we're doing a few different programs. Um, San for Harmony is a free curriculum that actually the entire state of New York is adopting for their social-emotional learning standards. Um, we've been able to get the programming and all of the packages. They set us huge boxes of this free curriculum, and came and trained all of our, um, elementary school counselors on the San for Harmony curriculums, and we're gonna be, um, pushing that out in the elementary schools this year. At the middle schools, we're doing Character Lab, um, which is looking at, um, they kind of talk about character traits, but it's just kind of like, how are we building resiliency? How are we building grit in our students? And those kind of big character traits, we want to make sure our students are to be with them after they leave us. At the high school level, we are starting Active Minds Club, which is a national organization that is about mental health and wellness and reducing the stigma around mental health. So each of our four high schools will have a, um, an Active Minds Club that students will, um, participate in and be able to organize different functions in the school. They'll be autonomous and that, and be able to say, we're gonna do a stress lesson week during exam week, where they're gonna organize, um, a kickball game in the field, or they're going to set up board games for students to be able to go to. Or be able to recognize Mental Health Awareness Month and, and pass out information for students to have access to. Um, so we really want our students to be able to take charge of that and decide what their building might need. We might have a certain need of one building that didn't necessarily others, so they can really focus on that building, what their need is and what they want to focus on, and really start, start that conversation, start reducing that stigma as students will go and seek the help if they need it. Uh, we also this year have a bachelor's level school social work intern, which our first year doing that. We're going to model what a case management, or sort of the old-school school committee liaison role used to look like, and have that person be able to be doing more prevention, working a lot with the parents, maybe doing some, um, outside parenting, um, taking away some of the, you know, case management types of activities that our school social workers were doing, so that can free them up to do a little bit more clinical work, which they're all trained and licensed to do. Uh, for tier two is our prevention and early intervention. Um, this year with, um, moving Centero down to elementary and middle school, we will have, um, at least a half-day in every building, an extra clinician on top of our school social workers in every elementary and middle school, and then as well as the high schools with O S U. So we're going to have an extra person, and health-wise, in all of our buildings this year. Um, like I said, our school social workers are getting their time freed up a little bit with looking at maybe this case management role, um, and then having the extra mental health support. They're able to serve more students, um, basically take on a bit more short-term basis, check-ins, um, and connecting families with resources and things like that, so they're able to do that. Um, also with the vape detectors, we are working on our bathing curriculum that we're gonna offer for the education component of the suspension reduction. Um, we found a program through the American Wellness Association that is, um, prepackaged. It's four fifty-minute sessions that a teacher can go through and look at what started fixing, or I guess started ecigarette and tobacco products. It's kind of more general. Um, what started them using those in the first place, what are their triggers? What other coping skills can they be using in place of that? So it really takes kind of an education component, not just don't do it, it's not good for you, but really getting to the bottom of what's going on, why are you using, and what are some alternatives that you could, um, be doing instead. Uh, and then finally, our tier three for our mental health and intervention treatment. Um, we have Centero at K eight and O S U at the high school level providing that actual intervention and treatment for our most at-risk students and supporting their mental health needs. So that's what we're doing to support our students, but of course, we're also looking at what we're doing to help our parents. A plug for our P V T program for next week. Um, on, on Wednesday, we have Dr. Chris, who is actually an Active Minds speaker coming, um, talking about adopting a healthy mental health culture, what parents can do. Um, she takes a really great approach because she has both a personal experience with being, um, having high anxiety, being a high-achieving student herself. She is a parent and has experienced her kids also being high-achieving and perfectionistic, and then she's also a psychologist, so she has a professional aspect as well. So her focus is really on high-achieving, perfectionistic-type students, and how we can help them manage that and, and deal with some of the struggles that come with that high-achieving culture that we, we have. Uh, we're also looking at just ways that we can provide more resources and communication with our parents and planning other educational opportunities so that they're getting as much that we can do them as well. And then finally, for our staff, um, we are certainly promoting as much self-care as we can so that our staff can take care of themselves, so that they can come to work every day and be able to take care of our kids. Um, they're really the ones on the front line, so making sure they know that they also need to go home and decompress and find ways to take care of themselves. Um, our P V theme this year is on self-regulation, which is one of the social-emotional learning competencies. So we're teaching teachers how to self-regulate, so that they can help the students self-regulate as well. Um, we just pushed out Cognito, which is an online virtual simulation training that will be provided free through the Ohio Suicide Prevention Coalition. Um, teachers can go on, and it's about a sixty-minute training where they have a virtual simulation of a student, and the student says X Y Z. And then the teacher has to pick what they would say back, and then gives corrective feedback on why that was a good thing to say, or maybe true to say that phrase. So it really kind of teaches them how to approach that student, and then eventually get them to the correct person. But if we have a student coming to a teacher as their first line of defense, we have a lot of teachers who that scares them. So giving them that tool so they know how to address that if a student comes to them and says that, so they feel a bit more prepared. Um, we are continuing with our trauma-informed care training. They're able to train, um, nine buildings last year, as well as a few other groups such as intervention aids. So our goal this year is to get another five buildings trained, as well as, um, some more specialized groups. Um, and then offering more mental health and social-emotional learning, O P D As, and professional development opportunities as well. development opportunities as well. And then I'm working with Mr. Fettig and Ms. Hatfield on the new Safe, Human Wellness, and Success funding and coming up with a plan on what we are going to zap for. I'm very excited about it.
Just going for the recognition response you just talked about for the teachers at educational process. How are we pushing that through the population for the teachers? Is it something that we're going to ask them to? Is it a voluntary process to learn that, or is it a required part of what the continuing education would be?
For the Cognito? So currently, it's a voluntary process because we do have, for the state-required suicide prevention training, we do have a public school works course that they typically do. So for right now, we're using it as, so we send an all-certified staff email saying, please take sixty minutes of your time. I have got some questions of Candace County's professional development and Candace County's C E U's are looking into that. The particular program itself doesn't offer it, but you get a certificate that says you've completed one hour of training. So we can look to see if we can run it through OPDA as a one-hour training. But for right now, with the free license that we have, we're just trying to get as many staff to take it and see how it goes. And they're able to push out to us a report of how many staff have taken it.
I have a question that has come up. What are we doing to talk to our students and their parents about preventative measures for vaping? You know, before they get caught?
Yes.
You know, I understand your curriculum for when they get caught.
Absolutely.
But what are we doing to prevent them from even starting?
Yeah, so in general, I forgot that in my Tier One part. In general, we are looking at our overall prevention curriculum and making sure that we're keeping it as expansive as we can, K-12. Obviously, the more education that we're putting in the lower levels, the less intervention, the less likely kids will need that intervention for later grades. And so vaping has kind of come up really quickly.
Oh, yeah.
So looking out to community resources, not very many programs have a vaping-specific prevention education. It's kind of intermixed with just typical drug education, so it's hit on some of the other prevention curriculum that we have. However, we are looking at more, like Mary Kay's we're working with and Dr. Delaware, they're looking at developing more prevention-specific curriculum around vaping, especially with recent news with what's happening. And so hopefully, there'll be more out there. We have, I have a few speakers who have reached out to me as well to do more parent education rooms as well, so we'll hopefully be doing at least one of those. So it's coming up more and more. I think at first, everyone was like, oh, what is this vaping? And now all of a sudden, everybody needs education on it, so, yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, next item is the Board President's Report. I've got two kind of quick comments. One is, on state report cards, particularly very gratifying to see this, like we're doing a lot of hard work, both administration and staff, which will remind ourselves that it's one data point, many data points, in which we measure success across the district. In just the last two years, in the R B's, we're going to stay in the course and do what we think is right for these kids and keep our performance tied and sustained over time. So it is gratifying, kind of the V A thing, I just mean as kind of a variability across the report card. But gratifying, not always. Second item is just coming up vaping. You know, we'll be voting later to install vape detectors at the high schools. This is not the first time we've talked about vaping at Old Tangi. Earlier this spring, I think it was the Old Tangi High School DECA program came in with a very compelling argument as to the seriousness of the issue, the damage and challenges it has been. And I just think it's, the investment we're making tonight is just an investment in the third leg of the school around education, around prevention, and around detection. So it's very consistent with a very comprehensive approach to addressing this very serious issue. So with that, turn around this, ready?
Trip on one of these wires. Of course. Thank you for, thanks for the comments, Mr. O'Brien, vaping.
I failed to mention, I did want to recognize the administration and the staff for getting out ahead of this issue and not lagging. When we had the DECA presentation, we felt like we were behind. I think the changes we made to policy over the summer and this step, I think put us back to the forefront of this issue.
No one else that I know of in Central Ohio is doing what we've done.
Well, sometimes, you know, it takes a lot of time and energy to say that to those kids. They're far more committed to staying undetected than we are to detecting that. And you know, it is just, it's kind of, obviously, the DECA presentation was very, very eye-opening. And then, because when it's covered from the kids, it makes it that much more compelling. And then, you know, when I hear comments from kids who simply say, I won't use the restroom in high school all day because too many kids are in the vaping. That makes it real. So, and it's not like our staff wasn't trying to detect them, especially the kids were very committed to them. You know, I know we had three presentations, I think they were all outstanding, so thank you all for those presentations. Alissa, thank you for hosting and touring, the kids did a fabulous job. We do have a couple of special guests in the audience, two of our fantastic plus drivers come out tonight to participate in the board meeting. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here, appreciate the interest. Our Teacher of the Year, Mr. Show, is here.
He's all here.
He's a white, former Liberty student who's.
That's kind of a coach or something.
Well, he has been a boost across a hundred minutes of coaching.
Really?
It's hard.
Bet you some vegan tots on that one.
Which were good, by the way.
God, he just doesn't hurt his teeth. You know, Jeanette has been doing a fabulous job of data analysis and getting that to us. You know, it is, I agree with Mr. O'Brien's comments on that data. You know, it's very rewarding to go from a D in growth to an A in growth, knowing you did exactly nothing different. So.
Which all along.
All along we do, was the case, we were on the right path. But it is very gratifying for the staff to see that. And building by building, as we get to the end of this breakdown, building by building data is outstanding and, and again, continue improving, but that is just one measure. And Alissa and Bethany's presentations every year, I would say, Bethany is as astute a businessperson as there is out there. To run this huge organization of our food service, over two million meals in the black, keeping costs down, keeping prices down, and serving unbelievably high-quality people, it's just amazing. And I still marvel at our food service staff for how they care for our kids, what they do each and every day. You know, it's like they're making lunches for their own individual children, especially because those kids come up to the belly line, so. Awesome job. So anyways, that was just a couple, obviously, a couple of good things. We started, every one of our schools hosts Military Appreciation Night. Burman did theirs last game. Tomorrow night, if you don't have anywhere to be, Orange High School does an outstanding job with their Military Appreciation Night. And then Liberty, Liberty is also tomorrow night, and then 18th, Falls on the eighteenth. Tom Polly, actually, on the blue and on the right, that's his father, who's a World War II veteran, so the other two, they're both children, they're World War II veterans, so they'll both be in attendance. They're just a great night. We have a student, Sadie Pika, Rayala, is going to be part of TEDx Columbus. She's actually our second student that's been part of TEDx. So you see there, she founded an organization called Columbus Civic, which is an email newsletter and is designed to target immigrant refugee communities. She's a participant in our Global Scholars Program. So that's one of the new supplementals that's on your agenda for global programs, been growing, and their curriculum team does a great job on the Global Scholars Program. We're very proud of this young lady for her participation in TEDx. As Alissa mentioned, with the Parent Programs Team coming up on September eighteenth, and I always like to make sure I publicize that for our parents, get out to these events. They're outstanding events, they're much-needed, they're things our parents need to hear. They're designed in this category. Have you participated in that last year? Were you just visiting?
No, I'm staying.
Oh, you're there, okay. So, you know, just, it's one of our longstanding traditions, designed by parents, for parents, and it's really the things our parents need to hear. So I highly encourage parents to go here, Dr. Lee presents on adopting a healthy mental health culture. And then, you know, this is always just, I want to highlight one of the many events that happen throughout the district. Anytime we have somebody in need in the district, our buildings step up, organize fundraisers. So Mr. Chervis, he's a teacher at Shanahan Middle School, battling leukemia right now, and so Shanahan Middle School will help one fundraiser, and they're actually doing another one coming up for Team Chirp. So just very proud of our schools when they step up to help out. So just a few action items, I want to highlight Kathy Lofus is the guidance secretary at Old Tangi. She's been here as long as I've been, or at least she came saving as I did seventeen years ago, does just a phenomenal job taking care of the kids, especially as they're transitioning to college and transcript and all those things. So she will be missed at Old Tangi High School. Obviously, there's the purchase for the Halo smart sensors. I really liked what you said, Mr. O'Brien, it's an investment. A lot of times, people look at this, this is a, you know, anytime we spend any money, somebody questions it as a hefty expense or a large number or those kind of things. But if you look at it in terms of the number of high school kids we have and the number of years the sensors will be activated, it gets whittled down to a pretty small number. And if it is the type of thing that prevents one kid from vaping, chooses not to vape, chooses, there's certainly been a lot of media attention with dying. So I think that's a pretty small investment here for the safety of our kids. So then, obviously, a couple of, these are annual resolutions. Master Supply agreed with Direct Energy and then are agreed with Meta for the bus purchasing program. Don't forget to get this morning, Russ.
Sorry, I've been here long enough to do that.
And then, as usual, there's our upcoming dates. We do not yet school on September sixteenth for students, as it's our first professional development day. Parent Programs Team, our next board education meeting, we will be back at our offices. It's always startling to me to see the end of first quarter already out there disappear so fast, and then the other dates in October, we don't have school here coming up, so. Questions? Ask a question?
Yeah, and you brought it up, we are approving the vaping detectors tonight for the high schools. I've gotten questions, why aren't we putting them in middle schools as well?
You know, so we have not seen that as a, you know, predominant issue at this time. I think we're going to continue to analyze that as we go forward with that. You know, is that many more? Is it five middle schools?
Absolutely.
Is that any more bathrooms in those kind of places? Essentially, rather than the quote is, I mean, it's nine hundred ninety-four dollars per sensor, so that's per bathroom, so you have sixty-six total bathrooms in high schools and middle schools. We have not seen that as a prevalent problem. We have not, you know, had the number of disciplinary cases or kids coming forward with that, so. My hope would be, given the attention, the raising of awareness, I mean, again, a number of parents who are simply unaware of vaping in general, the perception that vaping was a safe alternative to smoking, you know, so that is changing quickly. You know, the media attention for the issues, Juul is going through and those kind of things, changing the law of Tobacco Twenty-One, so now high school kids will not have as much access to the vape products because the source for the middle school kids to get vape products is their older siblings, so. So I think there's a lot of good things that are happening. That doesn't lessen, I don't think lessen the need. Or, the other thing that's important to note about the Halo sensors is that they also detect an elevated noise level. And as we, you know, so if there is an altercation in a bathroom and there's an elevated noise level, the same alert would go off to the root administrators that something is happening in the bathroom.
And then I had a question from a parent saying that their child is worried that if the vaping detector goes off while they're in there, but they weren't vaping, how does the administrator know who was vaping and who wasn't? They're afraid.
I spoke to my son yesterday.
Yeah, they're afraid they're getting caught, being an innocent bystander.
Well, typically, what's been happening is that when we do have the timestamp, should we find out who is in there, that gives us a reasonable suspicion, which is what we need to do, a search of that person and their property. If we found, so far, it's primarily people have been in possession. Of course, the kids will figure out ways around that. If they're the only one in there and it goes off, then whether they're in possession or not, I would say I have a reasonable suspicion, I can apply discipline. And so, I've been spending fourteen years as a building-level administrator. I think our administrators do a really good job of getting to the truth. And as everyone, the kids like say, the truth will set you free. The truth will be honest, and you know, if you don't have that, again, their trusting of our kids by and large, and if they don't have that reason, that suspicion, then, you know, I think those situations will work out. And, you know, if we did, you know, I think if, you know, that does happen where somebody is falsely accused, we'll get to the bottom of it and make it right. We're not going to falsely punish a kid who's not.
I think we screen them, like there's nicotine screeners or whatever, and if a child was in there and was not doing that activity, and in the next stall, there was, one, two, or up to five, that would weed it out, wouldn't it?
Yeah, and we've had, I've had that happen over the years, so if a kid gets into that situation or, I accuse them of being under the influence. You know, it's a kid that I just feel is presenting the signs of being under the influence, and the parent takes him for a drug test, and the drug test comes back clean. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry that I was concerned and wanted to keep your child safe, but, and some parents take it really well, and some parents don't take it as well. But, you know, we're not, we're in the education business. We're not looking to discipline anyone. We discipline the students we feel it's appropriate to apply disciplinary consequences to when they violate their quota requirement.
Any else from the room? Thank you. Ms. Hatfield, your support.
Absolutely. So as you can see from the agenda, Mr. Ray and I will be bringing the bond level clinical presentation back in an abridged format to talk about the items that are on our facilities' needs list. On the board action item, we have a very qualified candidate that we are having to bring forward to join our finance and audit committee. Mrs. Patton expressed interest in joining the committee. I believe Jeanette actually referred her to us and got us connected, so thank you for that. She works in, works at AEP as a record controls and compliance and as a CPA. So I think she'll bring an excellent background of corporate accounting to the field and help us answer those questions that our community asks when we're trying to compare fund accounting to corporate accounting and answering all of those details. So we're bringing her forward to formally, after joining the committee, which we're excited about. Our next finance and audit committee, just for the general audience, will be September twenty-third. We are meeting at the administrative offices to discuss, single over the first draft of the five-year forecast update. The law did change, allowing districts to push that back to November, should they choose. But because of the items that we're working through and our long-term planning goals with our levy and our capacity needs, we are going to hold that in October so that we can have conversations about what would we need for operations to follow the long-term capital plan needs. So again, that will be September twenty-third. It is open to the public if you would like to attend. And then for tonight, on the board agenda, we have four leading minutes for approval for the month of August, just following compliance with Ohio Revised Code and making sure that information is made public. And then we also have the approval of our insurance rates for calendar year two thousand and twenty. As you will know, only medical insurance is there with our carrier for Medical Mutual in Ohio. That is because through our negotiation processes and our P processes that we have with all of our carriers, our dental vision and our life insurance is held at zero increase. So all three of those components will hold at the rate that we had for two thousand and nineteen, and only medical will. So all three of those components will hold at the rate that we had for two thousand and nineteen, and only medical will be increasing. That rate will go up four percent. So that is a great, a great return on that. I think a lot of the area schools have been seeing much higher, if not double digits, if not in the lower twenties, for their renewal rates, so we were very excited to have that four percent increase for the district. Just as a general background for the audience, when we consider how we set that rate, what we're looking at, you're looking at the rating that we receive from Medical Mutual of Ohio. They always bring forward an actuarial recommendation to us about what that renewal should look like. We look at our claims history analysis, our fund balance consideration, where we are with that self-insured fund balance. And then review of the district actuarial report that we have done annually by Family Davies, which is an outside CPA firm, an actuarial firm. They run the numbers and do an analysis of where that fund balance should be and making sure that we are in compliance and leading rules and regs around that. So looking at all of that information, our broker and I sit down and look at the plan rating and where we would be to set the rate to continue to contribute to reserves in a reasonable manner, but also offering the best benefit to the board, to our employees. So we're very happy with that overall production and where we landed with that four percent. So with that, I will take any questions that you might have in regards to those items.
All right.
Thank you.
Do we have any comment or participation?
No, we do not.
So we'll roll into the discussion item, so Mr. Rafe, Ms. Hatfield, bond level ten discussion.
All right, so we're just gonna kind of go back and review, have a second conversation about where we are from facilities planning and other facility improvement needs. So that, I think, my, our hope would be that we come to consensus on the bond portion of our package as we go to move forward, so then we have adequate information to start planning the operating and permanent improvement portion of what we see as part of the next package. It's important that we understand what new buildings we want to, we think we need to add so that we can properly plan for our future operating needs to go with those buildings. So again, just to review our pre-K through five enrollment, our enrollment projections. I will be bringing Sharon Duritz to the board on next meeting to update the enrollment projections. Typically, those are done in November. To me, it makes more sense to now move that ahead of the five-year forecast planning process so we can accurately build those numbers into the five-year forecast that Mrs. Hatfield will be presenting in, in October. So again, at this time, we're projecting in the next ten years, an increase of two thousand four hundred and ninety-eight students, which is a twenty-five percent increase in our elementary students at the pre-K through five level. Reviewing the projected classroom need, we're showing that with our additions of eighteen classrooms that we've added this year, we are currently have adequate space, but then in the year twenty-one, twenty-two, we are sixteen classrooms short, so we, sorry, six classrooms short, and then that number continues to grow. So we're projecting to need to open an elementary school in twenty-one, twenty-two. And then as we move out, we show the need of again being short classrooms in twenty-four, twenty-five, at nine classrooms short, and then grows to twenty-one classrooms short in twenty-five, twenty-six. So we would project opening the second elementary school in twenty-four, twenty-five in this model. With regard to middle school enrollment, we're projecting an increase at this time of one thousand two hundred and forty middle school students in the next ten years. Our current middle school enrollment is five thousand sixty-nine students. And then it actually holds flat for the next two years, but then by twenty-one, twenty-two, it's going to five thousand two hundred and twenty-three, continuing to rise, fifty-three hundred, fifty-four hundred, fifty-six hundred, and so on. So with that, we're projecting to need to open yet a middle school. We're showing that classroom shortage. A lot of the middle school capacity, when you look at middle school capacity, we could have a classroom capacity could be okay, but our elective arts classes, lunchroom capacity is far less than the actual classroom capacity. So it really does start to put a lot of constraints on our middle school programming. So we're projecting that middle school to open in the twenty-three, twenty-four timeframe period in this model. So with that, move on to Emily. What we talked about in terms of other bond item costs and their estimates that we have in the total package.
Absolutely, so in this scenario, what we have, what we took a look at was when we would need to have funding in place. And so to the right, you're looking at the date of the bond sale. So we look at our overall debt capacity, we look at what we can afford and trying to create a new millage model and how this might play into that, that impact on our taxpayers. So with the rolling off of old debt, or meaning that the debt has been paid, it allows for more capacity or more debt to come in or new debt to come in to that same schedule and not have a higher effective millage rate. So right now, we are collecting at seven point five mills. And as we look at this overall plan, we feel that this plan would do that, that it would fit into that new millage planning and model that we would have available to us. So that's great news overall. As we go down the list, we're looking at new elementary number one, new middle school, and new elementary number two. Those would be the, of course, the first priorities. The costs in there are averaging at roughly two hundred and thirty-eight dollars per square foot. So we're working with our facilities committee to really take a look at that and make sure that we're capturing that square footage estimate appropriately. We are hearing lots of information about marketing strengths, being not enough workers in the construction industry, which is driving our costs as well as tariffs and cost of goods. Actually, the actual construction materials are also going up due to the tariffs. So they're taking another deep dive into that to make sure that we're using an appropriate cost per square footage. So of course, these estimates may change. But then, of course, we're moving on down the list of what we feel might be of high need for the district. Of course, the security vestibules in our newer buildings, they might have, already have the vestibules in place, but we're looking at retrofitting or putting in vestibules in those elementary, middle, and high schools that do not have those entries where folks gain access to the building, they have to stop and be seen by the office staff and then let into where the students and teachers are. So we wanna create that atmosphere where there is a place for the eyes to be on those individuals, they can see their hands, and take a look at what, at who's actually coming in before they're in that front lobby. There have been requests at the high school level for different improvements, for changing and updating collaborative spaces in the high schools that don't have it. Berlin High School requested a collaborative space to be put in when it was constructed. It's used very well, the students and staff really enjoy it. It helps with the education process of our students, so we're taking a look at that for the other high school buildings and getting that involved, evolved, rather. As well as looking at their media centers, broadcast journalism rooms, things that help their education base and give them more opportunities to expand those programs. Middle schools, again, collaborative space. And then looking with our elementary schools, playground equipment just needs, a lot of them may need update just because they're older schools, our buildings are starting to age. And we wanna make sure that they're ADA compliant as well as safe for our students. Sensor rooms and media centers are also a concern for our elementaries that are there. And then transportation, looking at expansion, additional buses, some additional switching in bus lanes, or reorganizing bus lanes as traffic patterns have changed, and so on down the list. So the list is not all exclusive or necessarily ranked. As you move from the high school down to the bottom of the page, in one order over the next, we are considering all of these items and will take a look at prioritization as we move forward with the cost updates. And then I believe at the bottom, there is the, we have listed the purchase of the current building that we use for administrative offices, which is East. And so then, as we move through that, we're looking at the timeline of when the bonds would be sold. We would like to have one package with this to help with over fatigue, to help educate our community about where we are and not come back to them as needs arise. But we also wanna take a look at that and be fiscally responsible and issue the debt in a way that would not incur costs before we need them. So we've got three dates in mind, basically being driven from the needs of the schools themselves and when the new schools would come online, we would be able to issue the debt at that time, incur interest costs from that point forward. And this gives us a good outline to be able to meet that construction need for when the buildings need to be built and to be available to come online for our students. Thank you, Ms. Ray.
You want to next, what's your timeline?
Yes, please. The general timeline that we're looking at to make sure all of these things can be in place for our students when the capacity needs are available would be the March seventeenth, twenty twenty ballot date or voting date. We have looked at and planned for our timing that we would need to have reports completed, to have forecasts updated, to have our filings in place with the Ohio Department of Education, with the states, with our Delaware County Auditor, Brooklyn County Auditor, to make sure that we're complying and all of our electoral needs are met. So this just represents when those things need to occur at the board meetings and then the other filing dates that we are required to do to make sure that we can bring these forward to the community and ask for their support. So with that, we can take questions that you might have about any portion of the presentation, whether Mr. Rafe's information or the information that I brought forward as well.
Yeah, well, I guess it's not a question, but a comment. And Brad, I talked about this a little bit earlier today. You know, as we think about particular buildings that a lot of expenditures on there, there's a certain level of uncertainty risk in those estimates. Rather than trying to overbake the estimate, re-estimate every line, just use a different process of contingency. Because really, what contingency is meant to do is help you address uncertainty. And the further the project out is out, the more risk it may have, just give it a bigger contingency.
Instead of addressing it differently?
Because all you're gonna do is take the uncertainty and spread it across the books and lineups. Just go, let me know, and then just have more of a risk-adjusted contingency. I mean, it's, at this point, when you're bidding things a year or two years out, I mean, it's kind of guessing.
Right, and we wanna plan to have, you know, from a planning perspective, we would bring forward an amount that would hopefully cover all of those needs. But again, as we get into the market and we're looking at that each project, we're looking at issuing the debt as needed, not necessarily the full amount allowed so that we aren't incurring any more interest costs or costs to take the bonds to the market and get it out there. So I like the idea of the, using the contingency as the, a buffer, it's a great word, thank you, as a buffer for that. And we'll continue to review that and see where that puts us in this model.
I would also just add that, remember too, that the way that we've done buildings has been to be consistent in design package, the fixtures and all those things. So there's a level of clarity to how we put those buildings into operation. And that has allowed us to have some, a little bit of a level playing field when it comes to some of the costing. As a reminder too, we have a strong architect partner, a strong construction oversight person who are also committed to, in the contractual process that we'll go through, construction manager risk, will have some control and ability to manage subcontractors to our advantage as opposed to... We talked about this last night, and we had a lot of, there's a lot of professionals that provide their time voluntarily who are in this business. And so we were able to have a good, a good discussion about what is the best for the district in this particular...
The whole subject of contingency was an important part of the discussion last night. And I think that contractor, like the contractor, CMO, it was a long, it was a special...
Yeah, and if you go to a single, if you have a single, you know, a single big contractor that's gonna do everything, you lose some of that ability, and you lose that ability to make some better choices because it goes to a low bid process. And then contractors are working very hard on their profit number as much as they're working on the bill. Sometimes those things work out perfectly, sometimes those things are complicated. So I think that that group has provided great information to the district. And Molly, as you said, Emily, that there's some uncertainty, the cabinet's some uncertainty, how the road's gonna cost out. I'm confident that our team is going to work to maintain that level of control that we enjoy. So plan for the worst and let that team manage to the best.
You know, this gives us, what we're asking for is authorization for these projects from our voters. And as Emily certainly says, we're only gonna issue or spend the money we need to spend so when we get those process limits, we go forward. But obviously, this takes a long time to plan out, and we do have a fairly good idea of costs. And Jeff does a good job of estimating what we anticipate to be future costs. Some of the ones in the near term are probably obviously much more accurate. We still look at the entire comprehensive list and feel like we've, through our, through conversations with our administrative teams and the community and building administration and that, that these are things that are needed throughout the district, that touch all aspects of our district. The subject at our last meeting, the discussion of the new middle school complex at replacing Shanahan is, has been discussed at length, it has been considered throughout this process. It doesn't, simply rebuilding a middle school at the site at Shanahan does not give us additional capacity. I'm not, I won't advocate for a larger middle school complex, a fourteen-hundred student middle school that is counterintuitive to what we want from our middle schools, of any of our schools, creating opportunities. The middle schools that over a thousand are already, they're thousands if you bid, but they're gonna be big. Just like our high schools are gonna be big. All of our, our elementaries are bigger than the area average. It's part of how we obtain our efficiencies. But simply rebuilding the middle school of Shanahan, a middle school of Shanahan does not give us increased capacity. And quite honestly, Shanahan still has useful life. We've spent money to renovate spaces in Shanahan, new chillers, new roofs. It has useful life. I would estimate it to be upwards of twenty years. So there will be a time, this district will replace Shanahan, the Shanahan complex, but the time to do it simply isn't now, in my opinion. So with that, are we, I'm hearing, am I hearing consensus on this list?
I just have a question on the contingency, you know, your idea of building additional contingency. So was it a hundred and seventy million that we can go out at no additional millage? So if you build in ten million, an additional ten million, you're still okay? Because you're, that's like a hundred, a little over, maybe three or six million, so you still got that buffer in there?
And I think our track record is a budget actual, and getting buildings up on budget on time speaks to our ability to estimate a building next year. So I think, it's not like we're sitting here and allows a track record and that we've demonstrated that we can manage these projects, we've demonstrated that we can, you know, get here to a budget and to a schedule, so.
And you're still, yeah, and Emily, you're still, we're still getting ready to close out the Berlin project, right? And we're still showing under, is that right, Jeff, as far as our overall budget?
Yes, considerably.
Considerably under that budget. So that goes to that team that manages the project and field. And I anticipate that we will have that same success with this package.
And I would, you know, I would echo your conversation about the facilities committee and their ability to really have honest and hard conversations with us and being forward-thinking so that we're confident in what we're bringing forward and how we're looking at the cost expectancies and putting the information together. So I do appreciate their time as a volunteer group and a committee. So I do appreciate their time as a volunteer group and a committee to do that with us.
It's also good to have our treasury staff attend those meetings regularly too. That makes those, that's really improved that discussion training. So while we're slapping everybody on the back, we'll go ahead and throw some your way, Emily. Because it has improved that efficiency in those discussions, frankly.
One thing that may just alter on this, if we're able to, I'm going to, I'd like to have a big conversation with our team about moving up the playground updates, especially from an ADA compliance standpoint, to see if we're, if we're able to move those up in the list there. They need to be moved sooner in the list rather than later.
Well, you got a few weeks. If you put together your best shot.
Just, I'll just reiterate the conversation last evening about even the constructions of every building, strongly focused on the best means to control costs. It's, it's there.
Are there any else on the bond level? I expect to continue this discussion and contributing to your... All right, so with that, we're just going to start loading. I'll present the first four action items. As referred, Jennifer Patton is a member of the finance committee, have a question.
So moved. Yes.
Second, any discussion? And then we welcome Ms. Patton. Appreciate it, really, Mrs. Patton.
Absolutely.
Ms. Patton?
Mrs. Beesel?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Hatfield, you want to present the treasure action item?
Yes, please, I would like to present treasure action items A and B for approval, please.
So moved. Second, any discussion? Seeing none, it's called all.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Beesel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Rafe, please present the superintendent action item.
Yes, sir, I'll present superintendent action items A through I for approval.
So moved.
One second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I...
Superintendent action.
I just have a, on item F, the approval of the purchase of the vaping detectors, I would also ask the parents to be a partner with us on this. Because it, we know if they're vaping in the school, they're vaping somewhere else. And so I highly recommend that they go through their coat pockets, their cars, their backpacks, and help us to ensure that they're not bringing them into the school building. And then we don't have to worry about the disciplinary actions that you might have to take.
Interestingly, I met with a resident who has a canine that is a drug detection canine, and he offers it as a service to parents, who'll bring it in their house.
Really?
And search them up.
Yeah.
So we may be pushing out this service as an opportunity for people.
Because as a parent, it's my job to parent the students. It's your job to educate them. So I hope that the parents take this to heart. But when they say, Julie, what are you doing while vaping, makes me very angry. But because, like you said, we have students who don't feel comfortable using the restroom in our school, then we need to take action.
Any other discussion? All right, please call it all.
Mrs. Beesel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, I'll now entertain an motion for adjournment. One second. And our next meeting is September 26th, that, the administration will be promoted.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Beesel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily, for joining us.